Good evening, folks. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals public hearing for September 11th. Just a few reminders and housekeeping. If you're speaking, please make sure you go to the lectern. Also put down your name and address just for the record. And then if you wish to join remotely, members of the public may view the meeting via LTC or local cable channel six. Those wishing to speak regarding your specific gen item shall write to the speaker in advance of the meeting by sending an email to the Department of Development Services, or you can call in as well ahead of time. All requests must occur prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. All right. We'll move on under continued business. We have ZBA-2023-7 petition of variance. The applicant is Mary Burns, property located 209 Gibson Street. Mary Burns has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals for variance approval to construct a single-family home at 209 Gibson Street. The subject property is located in the traditional neighborhood family TSF zoning district and requires variance approval. Approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum yard, side yard, minimum side yards, and minimum floor area FAR requirements, and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mary Burns. Mary is with us tonight, as is Brian Malisi of Haley Ward Engineering. As the chairman mentioned, this is a continued hearing relative to the applicant's request for variances pursuant to section 5.1 of the city zoning ordinance regarding an application to construct a single-family home at 209 Gibson Street, which is a vacant 4,000-square-foot lot. We had the initial public hearing back on June 26th. At that hearing, the board members had expressed some concerns over the amount of variances we were requesting in the initial application. So Mary went back with her, met with her design and engineering teams, and we made a few revisions to the plan. So the plan before you tonight eliminates three of the requested variances that were in the initial application. We've been able to shrink the footprint of the home from 24 by 36 to 20 by 35. By doing so, we were able to eliminate the need for relief pursuant to floor area ratio. We also took a look at the board's suggestion. We took a look at flipping the lot, the parking on the lot from the north side of the lot to the south side of the lot. And by doing that, we were able to eliminate the dimension of relief from the parking spaces for both the lot line and to the structure pursuant to 6.1.10. So we eliminated two additional variances by flipping the parking. Also, by flipping the driveway from the south side to the north side, we were able to increase the distance of our proposed structure from the northerly lot, from the southerly lot line. It came in initially at eight feet. It's at 14 feet now. And I know that that was an expressed concern of the abutting neighbor when he spoke at the initial public hearing. So we have maximized that to the extent possible. So with the application tonight, what's before you? Were you seeking relief from minimum lot area? Minimum lot area per dwelling unit, which sort of goes hand in hand with a minimum lot area on a single-family lot? Minimum frontage and side yard setbacks? There was also some concern at the last meeting regarding the overgrowth of the lot. Ms. Burns has reached out to four different landscapers to try to get somebody out there to cut the lot back and mow the lawn. Unfortunately, because of the exceptionally rainy summer we have, we've been experiencing, and the lack of help in that landscaping industry, she has not had any luck, but she has been promised that it will be done by the end of this fall season. So it will get done. We had hoped it would have been done shortly after the last meeting, but it will get done. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Brian. Brian will review the details of the revisions to the plan with the board, and then I'll come back and summarize. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Malisi with Haley Ward, civil engineer for the project. Councilor Gary always says he's going to hand me over the meeting to go into more detail for the changes, but as in the last meeting, he does a pretty good job. And I'm not exactly sure how much more detail I can give you, but we do have a couple of plans up to my left, your guys' right, which is the revised architectural plan as well as the revised site plan. Again, Mr. Gary went over them, but we were able to reduce the footprint by roughly 20% from a 24 by 36-foot structure on a footprint to a 20-foot by 35-foot, bringing it to inconformance with the land area, with the floor area ratio requirement in the zoning bylaw. As Councilor Gary said, we were able to mirror the site from the original application, in which case we flipped everything, with the driveway that was originally shown on the northerly side of the lot to the southerly side of the lot. And with the reduction in the width of the building, we were able to garner the required offsets again for both the property lines and the structure from the driveway. In doing so, we increased the side yard offset on the northerly side from the original application was four feet is now six feet. So while we still need that variance, we've increased that side offset by a third. And really, that's the gist of the changes. Again, we were able to reduce the number of variances required to just a few that Councilor Gary had won over. And really, I know I was very quick, but most of them here to answer any of the board's questions that they may have as the hearing goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Brian. So as I had indicated at the last meeting, we feel we meet the requirements for issuance of the variances. There was great care taken in order to ensure that the proposed structure fits appropriately on this lot, and ultimately, we are proposing a single-family home on a single-family, in a single-family district on a lot that is similarly sized to many of the surrounding lots. I've had an opportunity to speak with a few of the neighbors. The neighbors have made it very clear that they do not want to see a house on this lot. We understand their concerns, but the fact is, we have an undersized remnant lot that's been on the city tax roll for decades. We're in the midst of a housing crisis that does not appear to be ending anytime soon. We're in dire need of both affordable and market-rate housing. By approving this lot tonight, we will comply with the city's master plan by increasing the market-rate housing within the city as well as the sustainable Lowell 2025 Housing Choice Plan. I'd also point out to the board that we also have historic board oversight here in order to ensure that we do not stray from the historical character of the neighborhood. So if we receive approval with our variance request tonight, we will then go to the historic board. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board. We're happy to answer any questions or try to address any concerns that the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Now we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Hunt, and I live at 48 Florence Avenue. I've lived there for 47 years now. And I've come here tonight to voice my opposition for this project, and the reasons are really clear. The clear is the fact that they just don't have enough space on that lot for that. And as I sit and I look at the plans over there right now, it's a pencil-sized lot. It is grossly undersized for even this dwelling. You know, the owner has 57% of the required lot size and only 57% of the frontage. And I guess they've addressed some of the other hurdles, but I know there might be a few more. One thing I'd like to set, too, is the record straight. At our first meeting, I think it was the attorney that said that this lot was not subdivided. Well, in 1961, this lot was subdivided from the lot next door on Gibson Street, and it was sold to Mr. Burns. So back in '61, he bought this lot, knowing that it was undersized, maybe never had anything to do with it, but it was subdivided. Because I know at that meeting, the attorney said that this was not a subdivided lot. I have the sheet here from the registry of deeds. So I'm not going to belabor this too much tonight, but I really believe that it is really grossly undersized for even a two-bedroom. And the amount that they reduced the house from the beginning really isn't an awful lot, you know, not much at all. So I'm hoping that everybody, you know, takes a look at this, takes a look at that pencil-thin lot there with the house on it. And for the poor gentleman over here that lives next door to it, whose basement's going to be flooded with water, as I came in here in the rain tonight, all I could think of was, I wouldn't want to be him. I wouldn't want to be him next door as the water sheds off the roof into his basement. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, madam.
My name, excuse me, my name is Diane McLeod of 239 Gibson Street, and my husband and I are both lifelong members living on Gibson Street. We live at the midpoint of that street, and initially, I was like, well, maybe I won't participate. It's not going to, it's not going to affect me directly. But, you know, when I looked at that lot...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Could you just pull the microphone down? So we just want to make sure everybody, it's being recorded. We just want to make sure everything's...
When I looked at the size of that lot and what was intended to be built there, I just found it was absolutely ridiculous to try and build something on that size of a lot. I think it's important that, as citizens, we all participate in our government. And you, as a board, represent our entire city of over 100,000 people, and I hope you vote accordingly. I was also a longtime employee of the City of Lowell, and in that capacity was oftentimes, you know, at different board meetings and commission meetings, et cetera. And I know that in that capacity, you follow the rule of law. We are here to do that. You're here to follow the rule of law as well. And I see the zoning board in its process, in its actions, you want to retain the integrity of this city. It's for the fairness and the good of everyone in the city. You previously requested that this project be made smaller, which is totally inappropriate. No matter how big or small this project is, it's still a 4,000-square-foot lot where the requirement is 7,000 square feet. This isn't a tweak. This is, it's just ignoring the rule of law, as I see it. Several people, several members lamented the fact that the existing properties were built over 100 years ago on similar-sized lots. Well, thankfully, someone had the foresight to change the necessary zoning lot size as neighborhoods were becoming increasingly crowded. It's common sense reason for this happening. Previously, one member actually acknowledged all the concessions Ms. Burns had made over the months, not mentioning the concessions we, as residents, would have to put up with for the rest of our lives of this past. Your objective on this board, as I see it, is based on zoning requirements. There's no major impact on Ms. Burns. As she stated in the first meeting, she's had this property since 1961. Her family purchased it. She could sell it to abutters. She could do something else but not use it as a lot that's grossly undersized. It really saddens me to watch this go on, and I'm sure there's many people in the city that may own a meager 4,000-square-foot property, which should certainly be considered unbuildable. But now, they too can put together their building plans based on the precedent you could set here tonight. If this variance request came before you, and it was on your street and directly next to your home, how would you honestly vote? You have several individuals before you at each meeting asking for variances. As I said, there are over 100,000 people in this city, in our neighborhoods, that you have pledged to represent them by following zoning rules and guidelines. We're all relying on each one of you to do what's right for our neighbors in our city. This variance request clearly does not meet the requirements or intent of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and we are confident that this will not hold up in Superior Court. And we pledge to be there within 20 days if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Jenna Fromoche from 213 to 11 Gibson Street, which is the property right next door to 209. So I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. The first factor I would really like to discuss, as the prior resident brought up, is the lack of support from the residents. There is no community support for this project. It is an extremely small lot size. It is right next door to my house. And the fact that we keep discussing this and bringing this up in these continuance meetings is pretty much beyond comprehension at this point. It's overwhelming. It's pretty obvious, the positions that are being stated here by the residents, and how it affects this area, how it affects the street. Doesn't affect anybody that doesn't necessarily live on the street, but it affects us, especially myself and my family. So given, you know, bringing up the parking situation, it's a very tight street. Parking is extremely tight. Adding this house, if it's approved, is going to cause a major parking issue. And I can tell you, you know, for one thing is, if there is, if this does get approved, and if it does not win in Superior Court, there will be no construction vehicles parked in front of my house for this project. But this leads me to a really important piece here, is what's the precedent that's trying to be set if this is approved? There was a few articles in the Lowell Sun these past couple of months in regards to this project. And one quote that was brought up, that was in one of the articles that was very interesting is, "You're going to open a door that can't be closed." So in my perspective, looking at this is, how is privilege at this point a factor here? Is it because there is connections? Is it because, folks, someone has the financial funds for this? Close relationships that come into play here in decisions that are being made? There's privilege here. And that speaks volumes to the community. Anyone who watches this on TV, anyone who's looking to file for another variance, who has a similar situation, a similar lot size, what you do for one, you do for all. Is this the exception to the rule? I don't know. I can't answer that. But privilege plays a huge factor here, and that needs to be mentioned, and that needs to be considered when making your final decision. So again, you know, this just demonstrates, going into the integrity of our city officials, you know, when there's connections and there's relationships, things can get passed, and that's not okay. It's not okay. Everyone here knows what the right answer is in this situation. And how it impacts, this project, how it impacts the street, how it impacts my family and all these other families, is astronomical. So I do ask that you really take this under consideration when making your vote today, is how it impacts the community, the residents. We're the ones that live on that street, okay? And it's very important that our voices are being heard, our positions are being taken under consideration, okay? So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Clint Most, 211, 230 Gibson Street. Just like to start off, you know, again, we've all talked about trying to squish this home into this small little property, in this lot in between the two homes that are there now, that have been there for 120 years. I just think we really need to think about the size that we're trying to squeeze this into. And this decision affects many properties in the Highlands and the rest of Lowell. I know you guys are dealing with some other situations across town where we try to force, you know, getting properties built because we want to say that it's for affordable housing. We all know this isn't for affordable housing at all. This is for someone to try to sell a property and make money on it. We're not doing anybody any favors in affordable housing. The driveway was changed from the first plan to the second plan, and it was moved closer to our house in between the pole and our property. What wasn't taken into consideration is the elevation. It's very easy to look at a top-view drawing of a property. If the whole world was flat, it's pretty easy to see how things can be built. The reality of it is, a large retaining wall would have to be placed here, not very large, it would have to be three feet tall, and that would be anywhere from two to two and a half feet deep to be able to support it for drainage. And that would come into play as far as where the driveway is being proposed to be put in. So that retaining wall plus the pole, which is on the outer edge of the sidewalk, makes it very hard to be able to enter this driveway. So for whoever's going to buy this house, it's not going to be very fun. My truck is parked all the way to the end of my property line, which means there's very little room for anybody to even turn into that space. The road itself is very narrow. If you've ever been on Gibson Street, and it's at the end of the day, and everybody's parked there, you are not getting by. You wait, and everybody drives by, and then we just take turns to try to get down our street to get home, okay? So when you have something that's that narrow, and you're trying to make a turn to get into a very small space, you need a very wide turn, right, to be able to make a hard 90, which you can't. There's not a lot of space there. So road size, it's pretty obvious to me, just the size there, it's pretty ridiculous just getting through. And we know we're not moving the pole, so that's not happening. Also, there's like zoning board responsibilities. I know we talked in the past, or someone on the board mentioned that, you know, what's going to happen to the lot in the future? Where is it going to go? I don't think that's the zoning board's responsibility. The zoning board's responsibility is decide if we can build a property there or not, not what's going to happen to it in five years or 10 years. It's been sitting there since 1961, all right? There's nothing wrong with it. So again, I think this, I want to skip this part. And I just, you know, zoning laws have changed over time, you know, for good reason. I know the zoning did take effect in 1926, obviously a completely different world in 1926. Then it was updated in 1966, and then most recently in 2004. And a lot of that has to do with size, right? Everything's gotten larger, cars, you know, how we cram people into this city. I know that was a big issue 100 years ago, right? We tried to remove all the slums and that type of thing back in those days. And that was part, I think, of that program, right, trying to make Lowell a better place, all starting back then. Looking at the home, I don't think you can say this is a Victorian home, and we live in a historic Victorian neighborhood. There's lots of different lines on all of our homes. There's lots of character to it. It's not just a flat box on each side with a, you know, two-pitched roof, that's it, or a single-pitched roof, whatever you call it, with two gable ends. Pretty boring for this type of area. It is more of a two-family neighborhood as well. I know it's considered a single-family, and we can say that's what it is, but most of the houses are two-family, large Victorians, okay? Back to the future, you know, what do we say to the next person that wants to build this? Couple of people on the council are against this, so you probably, some of you probably got calls from those council members, who I spoke to and other people have spoken to. Everybody knows Vesna Noon. He lives down the street from me. He lives right at the end of my street. He has the exact same property that we're talking about. And in his board meeting, sitting right here, he said, "Absolutely not. You can't do it." He has that property. He has a side yard, basically the same-sized lot, where he could build another house if he chose to, and he says it's not right. It's not something that we should do in the community. So again, Vesna Noon, Corey Robinson, Eric Getcher, all support from these people on the board. Last thing I'd like to say is this, I know there was a time where Mary was going to have a property built next to hers on a lot that's larger than the one next to my house, and she was completely against it at that time. So again, if it's not good for her, it's not good for me. But again, it's not about her and me. It's really about the community in long term. You can't be building houses on 4,000-square-foot lots. There's a reason for that, right? That's why, again, zoning boards exist for that, is to protect the city and where we need to go. This isn't low income, okay? I know there's some other stuff up for, that you guys are going to look at, putting in multi-unit-built houses in. That's where you can get that done. It's not trying to cram these houses in small, small lots. So I do thank you. And last thing I do want to say is, the picture that was shown last time, or I don't know how many meetings we've had now, about the junk that was in front of the building, that was from the neighbor on trash day. Somebody was moving out, pulled all their stuff out, and they usually put it next to that lot. And so we can also say this, 18 years, I've been the only one to clean the front of that property, and I did stop a couple of years ago because I just got fed up being the guy that was trying to do it. And I think it's funny now that we're going to bring somebody in to clean it up after 18 years because the board says something about it. So that's all I have to say. I hope we make the right decision here, and we don't build this house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Yes, my name's Fred Bahu. I'm going to approach the bench with some signatures.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Fred Bahu. I live at 225 Gibson Street. I've lived there. Actually, I was born there, and I ended up buying it after multiple years when my parents passed away. And realistically, you know, that street is not only a tight-knit community, but it's also a street that has homes that are historical, in the sense that they're Victorians and they're colonials, and they're built in a way that have a lot of character to them. This home that's being proposed is minimal character to it. There's also, you know, a major issue on Gibson Street happening now, and, you know, Mr. Most mentioned it, which is, you know, accessibility going up and down the street. There are cars parked on both sides of the street at night. Feel free to ride by tonight, next week, any night you'd like. It's overwhelmed. It's overwhelming with how many cars are parked on both sides, and there is really no way to navigate the street. Also, there is a telephone pole directly in front of the house, and in the scope of this particular proposal, you know, it's not marked very fairly. You know, it looks very small in respect to the size of the lot. And a telephone pole in front of 40 feet of frontage is basically taking up, huh, because you could call it three feet when you have to navigate one side of the pole or the other. We're also talking about a three-foot driveway on one side of the property, and that three-foot driveway would, I guess, have parking for two cars, but realistically, people are going to have to pull out. How are they going to, how is that home going to have the proper ways to move around the street? So, you know, there are many issues. As a matter of fact, I even watched a previous meeting for the zoning board, and thank you all who serve. I appreciate it. I'm sure we all do. Some of the members spoke about the will of the neighborhood. Well, as you can tell, there is no will of the neighborhood. You've got signatures that you just passed around. You have the neighborhood showing up here, meeting after meeting, continuance after continuance, and are very bothered by this proposal. You know, I have nothing against the proposer or her counsel, but it's really something that shouldn't be built for many reasons. The other thing is, and, you know, Mr. Most touched on that as well, is the maintenance of the property. The property hasn't been maintained for 10 or 15 years. I know the City of Lowell, you know, says, "If you don't, you know, take in your barrels or if you don't maintain your property," you know, we're to get fines. I could get fined. If I don't shovel my sidewalk, I could get fined. It's... It's common in the city of Lowell. So, you know, all of a sudden, you know, maybe we're going to maintain the property? We've had since June to go ahead and tear away that brush, and tear everything away and clean it up. And this is even before the proposal. And nothing has been done, nothing. And I'm hearing, well, we're trying to find someone. That's, I don't think that that's good enough, you know? We need to work hard to go ahead and understand how small this lot really is. It's four thousand square feet. Lowell is asking for seven thousand square feet. It's not enough, like, you know, Mr. Hunt said, it's fifty-seven percent of what you need to build a home. So, you know, we're in front of the zoning board with four to six requirements that need to be approved. I could understand if you had to approve one, maybe two, never three. But four to six, this is, this shouldn't even be a proposal. And I just want to thank you for your time, and I wish you can make the right decision.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Eric Getcher. I live at thirty-four Livingston Ave in the Highlands section. I'm in, I'm here in no other capacity than a resident of the Highlands section of the city. We've heard everything. You guys know. You know, it comes down to two things when you're an appointed official, an elected official. It's integrity. And sometimes you have to say no to your friends. And it hurts, believe me, it hurts. I know better than anybody on this board, I promise you. I've known Mary Burns for, I've lived in my home, I lived right down the street for almost thirty years. Nice person. This is about profit. It has nothing to do about people. You heard Attorney Gary, who's been taking notes because he's making money. Every time you continue it and tell him what to do, he goes back to the drawing board and there's more money involved. That's not in the best interest of our city right now. As much as you guys sit here and you roll your eyes and you do your thing, we all know. We've heard certain members tell us how awful it is and then say, well, if you do this and come back, we're on the fourth time of this, we can do this because there's friendships. It's friendships over function of our city. Why do we lose good people in this city? Why can't we maintain people in this city? Why? Because it's friendships over function. And then you get good people who will leave the city because you made their neighborhood a poor neighborhood to live in. Why didn't Mrs. Burns come up with maybe making it a community garden, trying to make the place a better place for all of us to live? Why didn't we come up with some other ideas? We could really use a community garden, you know, as well as this affordable housing that one house is going to do and save the city. Twenty twenty-five, we know, come on. Is that really the best we got? Is we got the master plan of twenty twenty-five, that's what you paid for? This home is going to do nothing for anybody. And it's going to push at this board's integrity. And I am telling you right now, we're not going to stop pushing. And I'm going to donate to you. So if they vote the other way, I'm going to give you the money with them. There's no reason to wreck these neighborhoods. It's a four thousand, fifty-seven percent of the lot size. It's just not right, and everyone up there knows it. But one, some friend called, and I know who's beholden to their friends, it's very simple to see. The campaign's not going to stop here. As much as some people go knocking on doors trying to help other candidates, we all know what's going on. We're the Highlands, we're not stupid, we see it. You can see what's going on. I was in the neighborhood of the attorney the other day. You know how much land he has? He's not going to push this. These people bought homes for the quality of life. Four thousand square foot, he went out and cut it. Okay, since this happened, four times it's been continued, and the board told the attorney what to do that they wanted to see to come back. Is that really fair? Is that fair governance of our city? Think about this. I'm not going to talk about the land. You guys already read that thing, you know it better than me. You've been called a hundred times. I get the same calls, I get it. I just ask you for once, stand up, show your integrity to the city and say, look, you know what, I like you Attorney Gary, you're a nice guy. I like you, Ms. Burns. Thank you for all you do for the city. But this is wrong for the quality of life and we're going to lose good people again, selling houses, we're just going to have to turn over, and we're going to get outsiders to buy their homes, who are going to bring in people and they're just going to rent off and kill that neighborhood. And it's just sad that we're watching it. And I do live on Livingston Ave where that house was built across the street. And I pushed as hard as I did for this with Mary Burns. And I just think that Attorney Gary, as he writes his notes just to combat on someone's little inch this way or inch that way, we all know right from wrong. And this whole proposal is wrong. And we need more elected officials and we need more appointed officials who can just rule on what's in front of them and not tell people how to come back and push things. And we're just asking for fairness. That is it, just fairness. We're not asking you to compromise your integrity or anything else. We're actually asking you to go back to your integrity. Be honest with yourself, be honest with everybody in here, and vote this project down. After four times, and you made Ms. Burns spend all this money, well, it's going to get further because I promise you, I will donate back to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Allen. I live at ninety-five Belrose Ave. I'm dealing with the same problem from the same representation. And I see their faces, and me and my neighbors have the same look last time we were in here. And we got a continuance. I just want to say, if you do this, it does open a door that can't be shut. And I was the one that said that originally. And I'm really worried, and I'm here to see how you vote. Because if you vote this through, we're done for in Belvedere as well. And you know, we're on a five thousand, we're dealing with a five thousand square foot lot. So if this goes through, we're all screwed. And I don't know, I don't think it's right. And I just wanted to come out and just show my support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, all right, public hearing closed at the moment. Counselor Garrett, did you want to say anything, sir?
Yes, please. So first of all, I take, I'm taken aback by Mr. Counselor Getcher's comments regarding my fee, the size of my lot. Neither one has anything to do with your vote tonight. We put together a responsible application tonight. We did everything by the book. I've heard aspersions about, you know, privilege, you know, friends being contacted. I don't know what he's talking about. So let me, excuse me, I have the floor. I did call him, and I called a couple of other neighbors because it's the right thing to do, to talk to neighbors about your application. I called Counselor Getcher because I knew that he was opposed to this, and I wanted to talk to him and see what his opposition was. So yes, I did speak with him. Ultimately here, back to the facts. We have, I have provided the board with a, in my initial application, a plan of the GIS map in the city that shows over thirty lots that are less than five thousand square feet in the immediate neighborhood, with houses that are much larger than what we are proposing. We are proposing a house that is designed to fit on this lot. We understand it's an undersized lot, and that's why we're here before you tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals grants variances from the bylaws, from the zoning bylaws in the city. That's your function, otherwise we wouldn't be here. So we feel we have proposed a reasonable and responsible project tonight. Brian can address the telephone pole and the retaining wall that was addressed. I'll also just say that we are not exasperating the parking problem at all in this neighborhood. We are complying with the parking requirement in the code, and we are providing sufficient on-street parking. So with that, Brian, would you like to address the pole and the?
Again, Brian Mulliczy, Haley Ward. I believe when we were involved in the project, one of the things that the planning department had asked for was for that utility pole to be shown on the site drawings, which it is. It shows in the front of the, within the frontage, there is enough room to put the eight-foot wide driveway in, which again is according to code. There's enough room for the three-foot offset to the property line, as well as a three-foot offset to the structure. You know, with a telephone pole, I forget which neighbor spoke about it. You're certainly not going to be able to pull in a tandem trailer in there, but certainly a passenger vehicle will be able to go in and make that maneuverability and back out. Again, I've been down the street a couple of times. I do not leave there to anybody to jump on me. Yes, there's cars parked on both sides, but I do see cars parked in driveways up and down the entire street. This site would be no different. As far as its retaining wall goes, again, the butter's probably correct. There may be the need for a small eighteen-inch high to two-foot wide retaining wall along that southerly property line. However, it probably could be graded off to avoid a retaining wall. The topography is such that it kind of grades to the middle of the lot. So even if there were a retaining wall there, it would not affect any drainage issues on that butter whatsoever. Again, if the board were to condition this approval to say no retaining wall is allowed there, we could certainly grade around that and not cause any issues. So I hope I answered some of those questions. And again, I'll be right over there if you have any more. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Now we're going to open up questions and comments from the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Bier. Mr. Bier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been a proponent of this petition from day one. My comments are all on the record, have been reflected, because I want a fully utilized vacant lots. Now, I hear the voices of the neighbors, and I respect them. I respect them. I respect each and every one of you. And I don't question your integrity simply because we have a disagreement of opinion. I thought that the concessions, the revisions, the compromise that this petitioner has offered, quite frankly, has only emboldened my vote in favor of this petition. So I remain in favor. And has nothing to do with affordable housing. That's not a concern here. This is not affordable housing. Absolutely not. I've stated that previously. There is a housing crisis. There's no doubt. Someone builds a house, they sell it. Of course they're selling it for profit. That's not a violation of law. That's not a reason to deny this, in my humble estimation. The only thing I heard tonight that has been different, and I have no expertise in this area, is if this petition was to win approval, when I hear about the drainage, and I hear about the potential ramifications of drainage on the butter, that's a serious matter that needs to be addressed. I have not heard that before. I heard the butter talking about the proximity of the house, and then a compromise was offered to move the driveway. I thought that was prudent. I thought that was good compromise. Now, if, I am in favor of this, but this drainage issue...
Yeah, so we intend...
I would be remiss if I didn't say something about that.
No, so we intend to, yeah. I remember, I apologize if I misspoke, but what I had said was...
I'm not sure that you have.
Okay, no, well, I just, I do all the time. But what I had said was, for the retaining wall issue to that southerly of butter, the grade of the lot goes in a southerly, I say a northwesterly direction. My comment was that if a small retaining wall was required for the grading of the driveway, it would not affect any of the drainage patterns out there. So I hope I didn't misspeak and say that we're going to cause a drainage issue because we will not.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear you say that. I heard concerns of the neighbors with respect to drainage. All right, I just want to make sure that with my vote in favor, that that's going to be taken into account.
It certainly will be.
I mean, there are inconveniences on these neighbors, there's no doubt. Building on a smaller, that's a difference of opinion. I grew up in Lower Sennoble. You can shake hands with the guys next door while you're sitting on your living room sofa. So I know all the neighborhoods are different. And I know about parking being congested. And I know about there not being... I live in one of the newest neighborhoods in the city, Rivers Edge. We have parking issues there. It's a fifteen-year-old development. So that's always going to exist. But for me, utilized vacant lots, that's what this does. It does help the tax base. And I don't feel like I have to defend myself. I wasn't even going to mention this, but man, oh man. You don't come to any board in these chambers and question someone's integrity. On what basis? On what basis? Simply because we disagree? I see your faces. I know, I know you're hurt by the vote that I'm making. But I did so in a consistent manner. I can point to other votes that I've made to build on smaller-sized lots. And one of the other issues I brought up previously was this GPS map that was brought up. Of the sixty-two units of the sixty-two properties, thirty-one are more than the five thousand and thirty-one are less. So for me, I use the word emboldened. I'm very confident with this. And I have friends on both sides of this issue. So that's a ragtag argument. Let's all be above that. Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of this petition.
And a member, Bier, I would just indicate that we do intend to obtain a stormwater permit for this project. So any runoff will stay on the lot.
Well, that's very important. And in addition, as you said, the Historical Commission will also be having input and weigh in on this.
If approved tonight, that would be our next stop.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bier. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a neighborhood guy. And it's very difficult to look at the parties who are not in favor of this and not to take it in... It's difficult. But it's, if the people that live on this street feel that they are impacted by this, my objection is not based on any influence or any conjecture that somebody, you know, happened to contact me, and I don't take any calls. But I appreciate the plan, but it's difficult for me to support this just based on the fact that the amount of variance that it's looking for. So that's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I understand emotions are running high on this project. It has for, since it's been before us all throughout the summer. I've been on... I've been on the board for 13 years. I've never had my integrity objected to like that. I find it offensive to think that myself or any one of these board members are being influenced by who is the petitioner, who their attorney is, or anybody else. It's absurd. Absolutely absurd. I look at every single project that comes before this board, and I base it on this book right here. It's been approved by the City of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It sets forth criteria for me to review each and one of these single projects, and I do it with the utmost integrity, and I take it very seriously. And for someone to come before this board and derogate my integrity like that and the members of this board, it's absurd and offensive. I, I respect every single one of the members of this board. We disagree. We agree most times, we disagree. Many times, the project comes before this board with the material that's before us, we don't tell attorneys or petitioners, "Oh, go back, we'll pass it the next time." That's absurd. We make suggestions. We sit in judgment like any other judge or magistrate or someone else. We sit in judgment of these things, and we try to make compromises. We try to, we try to bring the community together. Part of that is to get the community to come together, to come to some sort of compromise to make these decisions easier. I understand this project is very, you know, it's been, it's been rough for everybody. And I understand that there's been high opposition to it, but to put it on the board and say that we're, you know, under the influence of other people, it's offensive, and I won't take that. That being said, we have variance approvals here. It started with six, I believe. We're now down to three or four. The petitioner has gone back and redone, redone the process, redone the projects. We have to find, in order for variance approval, special hardship owing to the circumstance relating to the soil's condition, shape and topography, such as land structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. Looking for variance approvals for lot size, lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, frontage, side yard setback. The main focus, obviously, is the lot area and to the extent the lot area per dwelling unit. The lot area is small. Yes, it's undersized. The requirement's a 7,000. We've got 4,000, we need 3,000. But historically speaking, looking at, looking at the project, looking at the, the property as was previously brought up, the product, the property was, has been in existence since Looking back at the historical record and going online, going on to the zoning board of appeals, I mean, excuse me, the registry of deeds, this, this plan set forth where, yes, it was one, once owned by Mrs. I.D. Gibson, going back to 1898, but looking at those plans, all these lots that are at 219... Excuse me, sorry. Let me get back to those numbers here. Going back, yep. 211, 217 and 19, 225, 235 and 33 and 39. They were all laid out back then. This one was also laid out as well. However, it appears at the time it was purchased, it was previously part of 203, but in 61 it was broken off. But all those lots are undersized for zoning purposes. 211 is 5,300 square, 5,200. 217, 19, 5,200. Those are both two families. 225 appears to be in, in order. Okay, that's fine. That's what I mentioned. 235, 233, two family, undersized for zoning purposes. It's not 7,000. All of them. It's a lot that's been sitting there since 1961, and it's been built around. Built around, going back, starting from 1898. So I think there's a possible special hardship here to the circumstances and the topography and the condition, the shape of, of the land, considering what's been around it and what's, what's going around it. So I'll give you a special hardship. Public good. Desiring relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. I understand the neighbors are congested, you know, they, they understand about the But it's another lot, buildable, that's already being taxed, by the way. It's been taxed since 1961. That'll add more to the tax base with the house on it. So I'll give you public good. Intent of zoning satisfied? That's a tough one there, Attorney Gary. Do you want to, do you want to elaborate on that, please?
Well, I think the intent of the, again, the, there's no detriment to the character of the neighborhood. We are proposing a home that, that's suitable for this lot. We have historic review, so we cannot run afoul of the historical character of the neighborhood. When it's all is said and done, we are going to have a home that fits into this neighborhood and fits into the character of the neighborhood. I have been part of smaller lots being approved in the past. I know you all have as well, and, you know, the vast majority of those, at the end of the day, are a benefit to the neighborhood. I can say that with, with a lot of confidence.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, I'll listen to my other fellow board members. I'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a tough project. Obviously, it's been going on for months at this point. I, I, you know, I've made my decision on this through site plans, feedback. I just want to address a few things, how we make kind of decisions here, and some of the things that have been brought up today, right? I don't know Attorney Gary, I don't know Ms. Burns, so I don't really have an opinion on whether you're good people or not, right? I see, I've been on the board since the fall, so, you know, the, the integrity of our board members has been called into question, not only here, but various other places, and it's unfortunate, and it's unfortunate for, for a couple of reasons. You know, backroom deals and all these other accusations. Well, you've already heard the board differs on opinions on, on this, whether for approval or not approval, and then there's been other projects where we've differed on approval and not approval, and it has nothing to do with the integrity. We have a difference of opinion. I, I think everybody on this board operates in good faith. It's been brought up that we, for lack of a better term, coach the attorneys on what to come back with us, as far as the project. I, I think there's some ignorance of what the board gets before we make decisions. We get comments from different city departments. They have concerns, they have questions, and we address them when the attorneys or the owners of the projects are in front of us. We're not leading them into doing something. We're asking them questions that were proposed to us. So the driveway flip, moving this project from two driveways in the, too wide in the front to, to stacked on the side, that wasn't the board trying to lead the attorney into making a change on this project. That was the engineering department telling us that this would be the best route. There's stormwater, there's economic development. We get weighed in on from various departments. So when people go out there and say, oh, they, they lead the attorney into asking for a continuance, no. There's issues that come up, they're brought to us, we bring them to the petitioner, and then they can ask for a continuance, or they could just say, no, I want to go forward with the project as it is. So to assume we're trying to lead somebody into making a project so we'll say yes, it's not only out of line, it's ill-informed. The GIS lots came up, which is great, but now we're making the decision on lots before a zoning change. So there's a lot of moving parts, right? So there, there's reasons to say yes, there's reasons to, to say no. And I appreciate the project owner, their flexibility to flip this, to give some space between the property, the, the structure and the property on the left, right? That was one of the things that was brought up. It was good faith, and I can appreciate that. Somebody brought up, there's counselors that are against this. As a board, we can't be swayed by city counselors' opinions on projects. We're elected, voted in to these positions by the city counselor to make independent decisions. So certainly, you can speak on behalf of your neighborhood as a counselor, and that's all well, but for, to, to say three city counselors are against it, that really has no sway here, and it shouldn't. We don't go in front of the city council and tell them what to do. They shouldn't come here and say, I'm counselor XYZ, I want you to vote that way, and I'm not speaking of the counselor here because he spoke as a resident of the Highlands, which is totally appropriate. But the fact that counselors might be against or for something, we've had them in front of us prior, and that doesn't sway our, our vote. I think this board tries to make the best decision for every neighborhood that they can. Every neighborhood's a different composition. So we take individual projects, one by one. Member Bier said he's for it, and he gave his reasons. I'm not going to question his integrity for saying that, and when I vote, I hope he doesn't question mine. We have to hit three posts on approval, and Member Callahan went through them, special hardship, public good, intent of zoning. We might have a difference of opinion on them, but that's our right. We have projects in front of us all the time that, that we have to really dig into and make a decision what's best for the neighborhood and what's best for the city and what meets the criteria to approve variances. So I appreciate the, the people who came out here in opposition and spoke and gave their reason and why. I appreciate the petitioner who said, we're willing to do this and this. What, what's not beneficial to anybody is taking potshots at people that sit on this board and make decisions of their own free will for what they think is for the best of the city. I don't think it hits all three posts. I think intent of zoning. This is a condensed neighborhood. Putting something into that small of a space in a condensed neighborhood, I don't think... I think the zoning change was actually made to prohibit something like this in that dense of a space, but for the people voting for this, I appreciate your opinion, and I, I don't think there's any nefarious reasons for making them. That's all I have to say. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, tonight actually got really pretty hot and heavy, so I was kind of a little surprised by that, to be honest with you. But I mean, appreciate everybody, these comments on both sides, listening to the neighbors and then the attorneys and stuff and everybody. You know, I'm going to take my, everybody's comments into consideration when it comes time to making a vote. So with that being said, I just want to say thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. I just wanted to add, thank you for the folks who came out tonight to, to speak on this petition. I know it's been discussed by a few people. I just wanted to add that I, I respect my colleagues, I respect everyone that comes here, the petitioner applicants, abutters, neighbors. You know, we, we come here, we, we commit all, all time and hours and really review each application thoroughly. You know, I, I don't know anyone personally specifically to this application. You know, I'm sure Ms. Burns is a lovely woman. I, I don't know her personally. I don't, you know, I, I don't, I'm not social with anyone in this chamber, but we don't, we don't party, we don't go to gatherings, any, anything. So I just wanted to, to preference that, decisions that, that I make, I always think about what's in, in terms of fairness, not just to the applicant, but to the neighbors and to everyone involved. You know, and, you know, obviously, we, we heard people speak. I was a little taken back by, by some of the comments, kind of more personal nature. I'm not, I'm not sure why. I get this is a very heated discussion and heated topic, but, you know, we're, we're all civil here, we're all professionals. You know, we, we all have a stake in what happens. We have no personal agendas. I know my colleagues don't have any personal agenda, one way or the other, on this petition or any petition, really. You know, even for myself, I, I, I volunteer my time here. I, I don't even take the stipend or the pay, so like, because I believe in service and giving back. And I, I know my colleagues, they also believe in service and doing what they think is right for, for everyone involved, not just any one particular group or person or any, anything like that. With that being said, and, and my decision is not because of the comments of, of, of one individual who was, in my opinion, very, just not very professional and negative. It's not because of that. It's, it's because, you know, the neighbors have some good points. You know, we got a petition here from probably like over two dozen neighbors that, that are against this particular application. Thank, thank you though, Mr. Gary. I know you did make some concessions. I do appreciate that. I just, you know, it just, it's hard for me to, to really go past the, the point that so many people are against this. I mean, you know, just, just to overlook it, I, I do think you do have some merits in terms of like the prerequisites and the criterias, but I think, you know, it, it doesn't meet all three. And again, to me, the, the neighbors are kind of, you know, if you had a few people who are, you know, maybe in favor or, and, you know, and I get all the arguments with, you know, housing, the housing stock and, and, and all that. It's just, you know, it's, it's, I think it's too much for the neighbors. And, and again, it's, my decision is not because of someone who said something that, that, you know, about my character integrity, it's not that, because if they weren't here, I, I would vote this way too. So I just want to preference that. So those are my comments in terms of this petition. Mr. Gary, is there anything else you wanted to say before we move forward with a motion and vote?
The only thing I would say with regard to the intent of the zoning, this is a traditional neighborhood district, and specifically a traditional, single-family neighborhood district. So the intent of the traditional neighborhoods is in this, specifically the single-family neighborhoods, to create single-family housing on moderately sized lots. We believe we achieve that goal. We're adding a single-family home on a, in a single-family district on a lot that is similarly sized to the majority of the lots in the surrounding area. So we feel we meet all of the criteria.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Mr. Gary, do my colleagues have any other comments before we move forward with a motion and vote? All right. Seeing none, kind of a motion, please.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. ZBA 2023-7 for variance, property located at 209 Gibson Street, under section 5.1, for relief from minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum side yard, minimum side yard and maximum floor area ratio requirements for any other... any other relief required under the low zoning ordinance.
All right. Motion by Mr. Proko. Second by Mr. Havi, can we roll call, please?
Was that motion to?
To approve.
Approve?
Yeah.
Chairman Peck?
Not approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Not approved.
Member Havi?
Denied.
Member Nickerson?
Not approved.
Okay, so one, two, three, four. Four in opposition, two in favor, does not pass.
All right. Unfortunately, the petition does not pass. Thank you for coming out this evening, folks.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We need to keep this for the record. Yeah, we'll send you a copy if you want. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, under new business, we have ZBA-2023-20, petitions of variance. The applicant is Matisse Mystery, located at 22 Carley Way. Matisse Mystery has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to construct a two-story addition at 22 Carley Way that would exceed the maximum allowed floor area ratio, FAR. The property is located in the suburban, single-family SSF zoning district, and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 in front of the relief required on the low zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, and respected member of zoning board, thank you so much. Actually, I'm part of the Lowell residence for almost 25 years, and I'm staying at 22 Carley Way for almost 15 years. It is a beautiful neighborhood, and actually, I'm requesting approval for rear extension, which is 18 by 22. It called two-story, but it is a high ceiling with a balcony, so it is like a single story for me. The key reason for actually requesting this addition is, two years back, my mom passed away, and my father is staying with me. My father is staying with me.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
And he is around 86 years old, and most of the time, he hang around into the main area of the house, which is living room and kitchen here, and he has to take the nap, and sometime basically walk a little bit here and there. And this kind of addition is going to help him a lot, he can hang around there, he can see the nature, and we can watch him from upstairs balcony also. So it is around 18 by 22 with a two-story, but it's like a high ceiling like this with a balcony. So I'm requesting approval for building that extension. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, sir, for that. If we have no further, no further comments about your project, we'll move the hearing to the public, sir, okay? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Okay, good evening, sir.
Yes, I am living in 30 Carley Way, I am neighbor, and I have no objection.
Okay, you're a neighbor, what's your address, sir?
Yeah, I have no objection. Address 30 Carley Way.
Okay, thank you, sir. We just need it for the record, thank you. Thank you for your comments, appreciate it, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor?
Sir, I have one more neighbor, he is here.
I support.
Oh, yeah, of course.
He is basically, the language interpretation is a little problem, but...
Yeah, yeah, if you want to just say his name and address, you could...
His name is...
Rajni Khan Patel.
His name is Rajni Khan Patel.
37 Carley Way.
His address is 37 Carley Way.
Okay.
I support.
He supports. He doesn't have any objection.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for your comments, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing done, that portion of the public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Jack Lujie, I live at 46 Carley Way. Just to give you a little information about me, in 1999...
Excuse me, sir, can you speak in the mic, please?
Thank you.
We have a lot of reverberation out there.
We have to leave it open for the public hearing, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
My name is John Lujie, I live at 46 Carley Way, and just to give you a little bit of information about me, in 1999, I was a civil engineer with Dana F. Perkins, Inc., land surveyors and engineers from Tewksbury. I was the design engineer for this residential subdivision. I designed all aspects of the subdivision, including street layout, lot sizing, and all the infrastructure, sewer water drainage associated with the project. Excuse me. I presented the plans at public hearings and obtained approvals from the planning board and conservation, so I'm kind of familiar with the property. The subdivision is located in the SSF zone, which is the suburban, single-family zone. This zone requires a minimum area for the lot of 10,000 square feet and a maximum floor ratio of .35. The ratio of the gross, that's the ratio of the gross floor area to the lot area. The city created this zone with the intent of having neighborhoods that have a suburban character, not an urban character. The SSF zones that were created are located around the outskirts of the city where there was sufficient open areas to allow for the creation of these neighborhoods. The larger lots allow for less impervious area, such as paving and rooftops, and significantly more area for green space on every lot. Closer to the center of the city, the urban zones were created. The requested variance in the zoning bylaw to construct an addition that would be in violation of the maximum floor area provision of the bylaw by 50% would, in my opinion, if approved, begin to change the character of this neighborhood. There's a reason that this neighborhood is a much sought-after place to live. The neighborhood character is a safe-feeling place, the neighborhood kids are everywhere, it's two dead-end streets, so there's no through traffic. The people in the neighborhood are always out in their yards, cutting the grass, throwing a football, or playing basketball with their kids, just celebrating their lives. On Halloween, people from other neighborhoods go to this neighborhood. The decorations on one particular house are so extensive that it's become, it's a destination on Halloween. But for these reasons, in my opinion, if granted, this variance would violate the original intent of the creation of the SSF zone, and would set a precedent that could change the character of the entire neighborhood. One other thing about this submittal is that, in order to adequately look at the proposal, you really should be able to look at the plan and what's proposed. There were house plans that were submitted, but those house, those submitted house plans, addition to a house, it's for a house in Nashua, New Hampshire, it doesn't, the footprint that's proposed is much smaller than the plans show. So, you know, we really can't even adequately assess what's going on here because we don't know what they intend to build. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing done, the public hearings close, we'll open up questions, comments to the board. The Chair recognizes Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
You did submit an amendment to the floor plans, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Actually, I submitted updated floor plans, by mistake, my contractor submitted some wrong one, which was in Nashua, and with Francesca, she is basically helping me to actually do this, and I submitted the actual floor plan, which is 18 by 22. It is not a big house we are building, it is just an addition behind the house, so it is not even visible to the main area. And we love this street, we are staying there for 15 years, actually, and around that neighborhood means we have Halloween parties and kids are playing, and that's the reason we love this place, you know? So I, based on my survey and site plan, they approved, saying that I can build only this, it is more than 10,000 square foot lot area, and they say, this is the 18 by 22 I can go, and this much higher I can go, so that's how we built that plan. I have a, actually, floor, I mean, it's a framing plan, if you guys like to see, I can send you.
Want to see it? Sure.
Yeah, bring it up, yeah. Thank you, sir.
I can appreciate that you're taking care of your family, and you're trying to ensure that, you know, that he lives a comfortable life at this age, ripe old age of 85. And it appears to me that, you know, careful consideration was made based on the dynamics of your home, that you are doing this development in the back as opposed to the front, where there would be minimal impact to the neighborhood, and it wouldn't change the impact. I like the plan that I saw here, the amendment that you just submitted. I don't think that there is much degradation to what you're trying to do, so I would look favorably on this. I would like to see what the other board members say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The Chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Just be with me one second, I just was looking at these new plans, and I'm really confused on what actually we're looking to approve now, because all I see is a family room. Can you, I'm sorry, sir, can you, I may have some questions, so if you might want to. So all I'm seeing now in the new plans, previously what was provided to us was, and... Yeah, well, I just want to go, okay, what are you presenting, sir?
This is the site plan, also. It shows around 18 by 22.
Yeah, we have that, we have that. I'm talking about the plans, if you could just get back to the podium.
Yeah, sir, if you don't mind just speaking into the microphone, just for the public record, we'll have questions, if you want to respond, just respond into the microphone, we appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the plans you just handed us were updated with that, with 22 Carley Way included on it, but they appear to be totally different from what was previously submitted, which shows, what I'm looking at is, the first floor plan was, you got a breakfast area, sunroom, bedroom, a kitchen, second floor is a master bedroom, sitting room, balcony, all that.
No, I got that, actually, I was continuously following for almost three months on that one. That was submitted by my contractor, then I submitted real floor plan, which is my framing plan, and sent a couple of emails, saying that this is the real plan, and I submitted this plan. Unfortunately, it looked like it is not updated with you guys, you know? So that's the reason I bring it here, just to make sure. Even today morning also, I had a call with Francesca, making sure that my plan is updated there or not, you know?
So when were these updated plans submitted, Fran, when did you guys get them?
This one is submitted for almost four months, and I already sent her updated plan a couple of times.
The updated plans?
Updated plans, yeah. When did you guys get them?
I need to...
I didn't see them uploaded on the website, so, I just looked it up.
Okay.
Is there a date on it?
Yes, there's a date.
Okay.
This is the original plan, which is actually, contractor submitted some Nashua plan by mistake, you know? That was totally different.
Yeah, if you want to give a remark. Well, I mean, either way, I mean, we'll wait and find out when we get the updated plans, but I think there's a lot more done with this, a lot of other things with this petition that need review, scrutiny, and probably amending. The site plan doesn't make, there's a deck in the back, obviously, that you're looking to get rid of and build over, right? It doesn't mention on the site plan that that deck is getting raised, so the site plan's got to be updated to show that the deck you're proposing is being raised, it's not going to be there. I know it's probably obvious, but it's not obvious from the plan that it's there. Additionally, I believe, if I'm not mistaken on the comments, DPD mentioned that there was no indication of the right-of-way that goes to the back. If there is a right-of-way, I mean, is there an intended right-of-way going into the back that comes out to the front, or is that...
No, no, it's just in the back, entry is from the kitchen, you know?
Okay. I think also in addition, looking at those plans, I mean, they don't even, it only shows the addition, it doesn't show the connection to the house, so I don't even know if there's, how is that connection to the house? Is there a door, or is there just an open entryway, or, like, when I'm going into, let's presume it's the new plans with the sunroom, or whatever it is. How is it connected to the house? As far as interior?
Yeah, so we have a kitchen.
Yep.
And then kitchen has a door which can go to our patio right now.
Okay.
That same door is going to go to that room, so that's how it's connected. It's fully connected with this house, and that's where the actually room is.
Fran, any comment? Sorry.
What's, sorry, what's the question?
I guess, did you find out when we got those new plans, or are they just coming to us now?
It's, this may have been my mistake.
Well, that's fine, I'm going to leave it as, I'm not prepared to vote on this right now, considering the plans that we just got today. I was unable, we were unable to review them, and I think at least the site plan needs updating, as very least, it needs to show that the deck is being raised, and any other. Also, I didn't see a landscaping plan either, was there a landscaping plan?
It's rear of the house, we already have landscaping there, you know?
We don't typically require landscaping plans for additions.
We don't for additions?
No.
Okay. I guess unless if they had, if they had a right-of-way going back there, then probably would, right? Because would that affect the amount of bitumious gravel that possibly, whatever, we don't need a landscaping plan, that's fine. But I'm, again, I'm not prepared to vote on this today, I think we need to get these updated plans back on track, and we definitely need a new site plan to be provided, and I can get a better understanding of what's being asked of us today. Because I came in this with the intention that we're going by the plans that were on the board, that looked like you were trying to enter and add a whole new addition to a single-family home. So, and I'm gonna maybe guess, if that was online, and anybody else watched it, including the gentleman who spoke against it, they would have saw the same thing, that the plans that were already initially, the ones from Nashua, showed you were putting an addition in, which included a kitchen, a living room, two bedrooms, a whole new bath, and all that.
No, no.
That's where the confusion lies.
Yeah, and that's the reason, as soon as I seen this, I'm trying to continue to change that and update that, and I'm working with the people here to put that basically change.
Okay.
Unfortunately...
Okay.
Unfortunately, it didn't happen. Even I had a morning call also, to just make sure it is updated. So at least you guys see the right thing. So that's the reason I bring that plan also, making sure that I can present it.
I know, Fran, any suggestions on what we can do on this? I mean, other than continuance possibly, or, because, I don't know, it looks, sounds to me like you submitted the plans, but they just never got circulated, is that?
That's, yes, I'm, yeah.
It's okay. I mean, understandable, these things happen.
That is what it is.
Okay.
So if the board has, I mean, it's up to you.
I mean, I have concerns of like, I'm just like, looking, it's not what I anticipated, but regardless, we still need an updated site plan. So, I don't know, I'll leave it in my fellow board members on what they want to do. I really don't think I'm prepared to vote on this with the new plans as they are, because I'm just not.
There is a patio shown, which is stairs coming out from the site plan. So if you look at the site plan.
I think the issue is, sir, that, yeah, we didn't, the board, they did not get copies of the site plans, that the updated site plans that you just gave us, we only have one copy. So each of the members, we've already had, we've had a chance to like, look at them right now, but, I mean, I got to look into this a little bit more, because I want to know if there's anything else that I'm missing. So I'd like to have another full copy, if possible, but that's why I'm not, at this point, not prepared to vote, but I'll listen to my other fellow board members for any suggestions.
With due respect, I still.
What they think we should be doing.
Yeah.
But that's my opinion at this point, but I may change my mind depending on what my other fellow board members say. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'll back Member Callahan here. Would you be willing to continue this, so that we all get a chance to look at the plans in full?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. You know, actually, I'm committed, because I, the reason I'm building this for my dad.
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate it. And the original plans that we had almost looked like an in-law apartment, right? So there's two different things here. The plans now show you're basically putting in an additional room, not a whole in-law apartment, which will put people in different perspectives. So I think, I'll let everybody else speak, but I think if the petitioner is willing to continue this to the next open space in a meeting, then that's probably the best route to go.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
I agree as well. I mean, I thought you were putting in another addition, as like a in-law apartment too, until I saw that. So I definitely agree, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my colleagues have indicated, this is the first opportunity that I've had to see the plan. So I would advise that you seek a continuance until we have the necessary material, so we can make proper judgment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. Sir, I think you heard the comments of the board. I also have very similar comments in terms of, you have to submit a revised floor plan anyway, because the reference address is from, you know, an address in Nashua. And again, I was also in the impression you were doing like an ADU kind of unit. So the plans you submitted, which, they're fine, I think. They're just, we don't have a lot of time to review them, and they're not accessible, just not to the board, but to anyone really viewing this. So if you're okay with this, because it sounds like you're okay, we're going to continue this matter to our next available meeting, and then you work with DPD, get all the revised site plan, floor plans, and then we'll have all the updated information we need to properly review the application you're seeking. Again, this is not a negative impact on your application, it's just, we don't have enough information on it. That's why we're just tabling it for next available meeting. Ms. Aliana, when's our next available meeting in terms of the document and agenda?
I do have one question, if you don't mind. So do I have to go through all these ads and everything again? Because there is a lot of cost involved doing all of that, you know? So the next date is coming up, right, on hearing side? Do I have to follow same process again to mailing?
Just the supplementary documents that we're talking about, okay? Not the butter notice and the mailing and all the advertising stuff, just, because I know that's an added cost. So just the supplementary stuff we're talking about, updated site plan, floor plans, just all the stuff we talked about. And work with DPD, they'll help guide you, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
The next available meeting is November thirteenth.
November thirteenth. Are you amenable to that date, sir, for the next hearing?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by my colleagues who have a motion to?
Yep. Just make sure you got to get that updated site plan. At the very least, it's got to say that that deck is being raised, because it's kind of, we got to make sure that's clear. So, thanks.
Thank you so much, board member. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. If there's no other comments or questions by my colleagues, we'll move to motion for
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, regarding ZBA twenty twenty-three dash twenty. Property at Twenty-two Carly Way, under section five point one. Maximum area allowed for ratio, a variance approval under section five point one, for maximum floor, floor ratio. For continuance on November thirteenth?
All right. Motion by Mr. Proko to continue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hovey. Can you roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance to November thirteenth.
Member Callahan.
Approve continuance to November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, sir, your mat has been continued to November thirteenth. We'll see you in a little bit, okay? All right. All right, moving on to our next scheduled item on the agenda on a new business. We have ZBA dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight. The petition is a variance. The applicant is William R. Ronald, located at one seventeen Lily Ave. William R. Ronald has applied to the laws of appeal to subdivide an existing lot at one seventeen Lily Ave, which contains an existing two-family lot, and construct a new single-family home on the newly created lot. The properties are located in the traditional neighborhood, two-family TTF zoning district, and requires various approval under section five point one for relief from the room lot size, minimum frontage, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot width, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, and any other relief required in the laws of owners. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, for the record. Attorney George Theodore, four ninety-one Dutton Street, Lowell, Mass. This involves the development of a four thousand square foot lot, which we are requesting variances to construct a single-family home on that lot. Now, I've been before this board in the past, and I can say that I have sought approval for the construction of single-family homes on lots comprising approximately four thousand square feet. And those lots were once vacant, lots filled with debris. Now there are single-family homes on those lots. There are families living in them who have something they didn't have before, which is the pride of homeownership. And the city of Lowell is deriving much-needed tax revenue from those homes. In this case right here, and I understand that every case that comes before this board is decided individually on its own merits, and that this board functions as an appeal board. The evidence is provided to you. You determine from the evidence whether or not an appeal can be granted and variances can be granted for approval by an applicant for a proposed project. So what we have here today is a lot in Centerville, which currently has on it a two-family home which abuts Lily Ave. Now, this lot comprises two lots themselves, one of approximately five thousand square feet the deed has, and the rear lot, which abuts Anell Street, is approximately four thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet. We are asking the board for permission to allow the two-family to exist that abuts Lily Ave, one seventeen Lily Ave, and to construct a new single-family home on Anell Street. Now, this home was constructed in nineteen ten. And if you take a look, and I found that from the assessor's records in the city of Lowell, and if you take a look at the records in the city of Lowell, most of these homes on this street, on both sides of the street, were constructed between nineteen hundred and nineteen twenty. So this lot has existed in its current shape since nineteen ten. There's nothing there now, but it's overgrown, and what we propose is to build a lot that fits in to this space and fits into the neighborhood. This neighborhood is a traditional two-family neighborhood. We're asking to build a single-family home. And I believe the Department of Planning and Development, they went ahead and they provided some comments, and they indicated that there are similar homes of similar size, similar frontage on that street. Right next to this proposed lot on Anell Street, and I gave, I handed out, or I put through them a zoning chart, which each one of you should have, that went through DPD. If you don't have one, I can hand one out to you. In this zoning chart, it shows the abutting property at one ninety Anell Street is four thousand one hundred and eight square feet. The frontage is exactly the same as our proposed lot, thirty-nine feet. And this lot next door is a two-family. We're proposing a single-family. We're not adding density to the neighborhood more than it can bear. Two lots down from this property is one eighty-eight Anell Street. That's four thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet. Again, similar in size to ours, that has frontage of thirty-nine point eight feet, which is the exact same frontage that we have. The next lot, one eighty-four Anell Street, is four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight feet, frontage of thirty-nine point nine. The next one is one eighty dash one eighty-two Anell Street. Again, it's a four thousand square foot lot, and it's thirty-nine point eight feet for frontage. So I think that the argument can be made that if we are proposing to build a single-family house and fit it in on this sized lot, that we are not in any way deterring from the character of the neighborhood. But what we're doing is we're proposing for a single-family home to be built on a lot that's overgrown, that serves no purpose right now. In our proposed site plan that you have, which Paul Campbell from Chess Engineering will go ahead and go over it with you, will show that our single-family home and the architecture renderings that you have, so that we have a front porch, we have a driveway on the side of the property, which complies with zoning for the parking, we're not putting additional cars on the lot or on the street. It has a, comprised with a deck in the rear. Its first floor is comprised with a kitchen, dining area, living area, and three bedrooms on the second floor. Again, my argument to you is that this complies with or fits in with the neighborhood. It's something that would benefit the neighborhood. The house directly across the street from this unfortunately is unkept and boarded up. So I think this investment would be a good investment. I think, Paul, if you want to go through the site plan a bit. And we can point out that it has the mitigation, drainage mitigation on site, which is a requirement. We went ahead and did that, so we're not adding any additional sewerage to the street.
Thank you, Counselor. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So for the record, Paul Campbell, Chess Engineering, and my office is at one twenty-six John Street in Lowell. So this parcel, like George said, this is a separate parcel. It's a legal lot in and of its own self, so we're not proposing to subdivide it. And we're just proposing a single-family home. We meet all the requirements for front, frontage setbacks, parking, parking requirements, parking setbacks and the like. We're asking for some relief on the side setbacks, but in the neighborhood, like our existing house is just a couple feet off of the property line today, too. So it's really common in this neighborhood for the houses to be very close to the side property lines. And we meet the stormwater requirement in this area. There's a combined sewer, so we have to provide stormwater, so we provided that in the back. We have sufficient open space, both lots, if, once they're under separate ownership, they both have sufficient open space requirements, so neither lot is kind of left deficient on that end. So a lot of the variances we're asking for are just variances of the lot itself, just being an undersized lot. So I won't get too much more into the site plan, but I can answer any questions you had about the design.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anything else you want to add, Attorney Theodore?
No, just ask, we ask for your support for this application, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you, sir. We're going to open up the petition and the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Theo Pantelli. I own one ninety-six Anell, which is next to this proposed lot. And I just want to speak to this variance. I think it would be good for the neighborhood. I own a multifamily on the other side, and I've been looking at that overgrown lot for a little bit, and looking down the street, all the houses on that, that street are the same size. I mean, they're all very small houses on small lots, and I don't think it detracts from the neighborhood at all. I know the parking there very well. I even spoke to my tenants about this potential, and no one really saw a problem with it. Parking's fine, especially if there's a driveway included. And overall, I think the lot's been empty for a bit. I think it would only add as a positive to the neighborhood and the area around it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Go ahead, sir, you want to come to the lectern, yep? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve Bendel, and I'm the owner of one seventeen Lily. First, I'd like to thank all you guys for your time and work you put in here. It's very much appreciated. Without going into all the personal details, this is a little bit of a hardship situation for me, where I'm a sixty-eight-year-old retired man. I'm just looking to get by. And every other house on the plan that was filed, I think in nineteen hundred, this was developed, this back lot was developed as a house lot, identical to every other lot on the street within a couple of feet. So it's benefiting nobody now. Not only can it benefit me, it will benefit a family. And I know the housing crisis, people can say it's only one house, but I would think of it as not one house, but one family that you're putting into a house. And I don't see any negative impact. The builders worked very hard, and I've talked with him throughout, to reassure people that we're not crowding houses, we're not pinning anybody in, we're leaving ample room, and we're being as courteous as possible. I just don't see any downside at all. So I appreciate your consideration for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, seeing none, that portion of proceedings closed? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of proceedings closed? We're going to open up questions, comments from the board now. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. A couple of... I'm, a couple preliminary matters, I'm just trying to figure out. I thought you said you were subdividing the lot, but now I thought you said, no, you're not subdividing the lot, it's a separate lot legally?
The, the legal description in the deed describes a front lot. And it describes the rear lot. And we're keeping this consistent with that.
Okay. Okay. I think it was just dawned on me that if that was the case, did we proper, has this been properly noticed for purposes of this hearing today? If we're, because it was noticed as 117 Anell. But then later on, it says in the comment.
It is 117 Anell, that there, there is no address for the rear lot. I mean, it was, it's there, 117 Lilly Ave.
Oh, 117, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
There is no address for the rear lot.
That you're trying to?
And, and we did post, you know, we complied with everything, posted the sign of the lot, and have done that. And so, we are creating, we're not creating a lot, but we are asking for the permission to place a single-family home on that lot.
You're not creating a lot, you have a lot existing that's on the deed, that is under 117 Anell Street, that you're just going to place a single-family house on?
Well, what we do, once, once we get, once that would go forward, the building department would provide.
Would provide an address?
Yes. Once the building permit is issued, they would provide the address.
No, just for, just for, you know, counsel, just for those purposes, just to make sure that we got all our ducks in the rook. I'm looking at the GIS map, and I do see it's, the lot is listed under 117 Lilly Ave. 190 is on one side.
190 is on one side, yeah.
196, 200, 202 is on the other side. So, okay. Yeah, it makes, I mean, looking again, as, and thank you for the breakdown again of all the surrounding lots, because they all seem, they all fit in the, the area of the neighborhood. They're all two families, it's a traditional two-family lot. And I think you met the criteria for hardships on this, and I think it'll be a good addition to the, to the neighborhood. And I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, your floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Guess my first question would be, the statement was made that this meets all conditions of parking. However, if you look at the driveway, you have the three feet separation from the structure, but it's directly on top of the property line. So, so you'd need three feet of relief there?
No, so the three feet is required from a building.
And from the property.
Parking, not for this, for this area, the, the parking setback, there is no.
So, you're going to have the parking directly abutting the property line, and then the property on the right side, where the parking lot would be, is about three feet from the property line on that side too?
Yeah, it's a tight lot, but we, we want to make it comply as much as possible and minimize.
I can appreciate that. I, I can. The density of this neighborhood is what concerns me. What we're, we're, you know, maybe it won't change the character of the neighborhood. I can't have an argument there, but, you know, when we start comparing, again, we just had this not too long ago, zoning now compared to zoning in the 1900s, while the intent of the zoning changes was to change from what it was in the 1900s. So, this neighborhood, I've driven it many times, is very dense, and we're looking for relief from multiple different variances, and this is the same type of situation we just came up with on Gibson Street, right? Lot's not big enough. We need, you have the front setbacks, which are great, side setback on the parking side is okay, but then on the other side, which, your left side property is right on the property line again, so you're putting houses right on top of each other. So, I, I have a hard, I have a hard time thinking the intent of changing zoning, especially when it comes to square footage. I, I think it was actually to stop projects like this. So, yeah, it would fit in with what the rest of the neighborhood is, but there's a reason why we changed zoning to larger lots. So, I can't support this. I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with the plans. I think it's, it's a nice project, but I, I don't think it meets all three criteria to pass.
Yeah, and I understand your concerns. At the same time, we're not placing any vehicles on the street. We are complying with zoning with respect to the parking. I understand that there are guests who come, may park in front, and, and I understand all that.
No doubt. And, and I'm not saying I can't support it just because of the parking. Listen, I have a single-family, and I have two parking spots, but I have four cars. So, we can say, yeah, this meets the standard of parking, and I wouldn't deny that it meets the standard of parking. My concern is the intent of zoning. This neighborhood is so dense, and both properties on the left and right are right to the property line, and I know that's no fault, and that's probably why it meets a hardship, but I don't think it meets the intent. That's just my opinion. I'm sure everybody else has a different opinion. One of the members already.
And the, the only thing that I can add to that is that, how can you change that lot? How can you do anything to that lot to improve it so it helps the city? By granting a variance on this lot, you can do that.
Well, so I can't coach anybody what to do, but you can, A, sell the lot, or the city can change their zoning requirements. I mean, we're bound by a certain rule. I under, that's why I said it probably meets the hardship. I have no doubt it's going to meet the hardship, but I have to hit all three posts, in my opinion. This just doesn't do it. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but this, in my opinion, I think I'd be hypocritical if I say this meets it, the one I just voted for earlier doesn't. But, good luck.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
This is going to be a hard one. I mean, after, after the last one, yeah. It's, I mean, I don't really have much to say, to be honest with you, I'm kind of stuck. I mean, I think that it does seem to be, especially with the neighborhood, saying that it would be nice to have it in there. That was a difference. So, yeah, there's a lot to think about, I guess. So, thank you though, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Theodores, I agree entirely with your opening remarks. If I didn't know better, I'd say I wrote them myself. I am very familiar with this neighborhood. My grandparents resided at 183. I'm surprised that this lot wasn't developed some time ago. So, this is very easy for me. It's very consistent with a similar petition we heard here this evening. I want to utilize these vacant lots to the benefit of the city, but perhaps more importantly, and I'd like to compliment the abutter from Lilly Ave. I'll compliment you because we share the same opinion. We're not going to solve the housing issue overnight, but we are going to solve it, one home, one family at a time. Thank you for saying that. So, I'm in favor of this petition, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Procol. Mr. Procol, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I think I'm in favor of this as well, but I'm not going to base my opinion based on my previous decision on another property. Looking at, at this area, I, I think the plan is going to fit with the neighborhood, and I think that there would be minimal impact into the area. I, I'm just, I mean, the streets is bigger than what we argued on before. I mean, there is, there is more space there. I drove by again this morning, just to make sure that I was seeing what I'm seeing. However, I keep stopping in front of 117 Lilly Ave instead of 190 Erno. But, I, I think just based on its own merit, and, and the, looking at the zoning intent, I think this particular project would fall within that, with that timeframe. So, I, I would be voting in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Procol. Attorney Theodores, you know, I, I do agree that you're seeking a lot of relief for this lot, you know, to, to subdivide it and build a, a home on, on the lot. You know, I think, to me, obviously, every, every petition, every, every item is on its own standings. You know, I think, thank you for the neighbors who came out tonight, the abutters, who spoke on behalf of this, how it actually be a, a big positive and gains in this neighborhood. You know, and I feel that too. You know, Lilly Ave is, what you're proposing to do, I think, would fit in with the character of the neighborhood. And again, for me, if, if you had all these people and all this opposition, that'd be one thing, but all I've been hearing tonight is positive, the effects on this, on this empty lot. So, to me, this, you know, we, we always operate in not the black and white, we're always in the gray area. So, this one, to me, it, it fits in terms of, you know, how, why we, we can approve and should approve it. So, so to me, this, this project makes sense. So, I'll be voting in favor of this too as well. Any more other colleagues have any comments before we move forward with the vote?
Yeah, Fran, for clarification, traditional two-family, is it three and three? Driveway, three from the structure, three from the property line? I'm looking at the table right here, and it says three and three.
Yes.
Okay.
However, just to clarify one thing, we're not building a two-family, we're building a, a, a single.
But it's a two-family zone?
It's a two-family zone, correct.
So, even if it was a single-family, you'd need three and three?
Yeah, I don't think it's a characteristic of the zone. If I remember correctly, off the top of my head, residential parking under three spaces doesn't have that three-foot setback.
Absolutely, absolutely not, no.
Yeah, it's something, it's something like that.
I'm looking at the table right here. In the zoning, in our zoning laws right here. Every single thing is three and three, except some are three and five.
I, I think it's somewhere in the footnotes or something, about two spaces or less for, for residential, but I can, we can make it a condition if, if you want to.
Yeah, you're not going to have a room, so I was just trying to clarify, three and three.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Havi. Do you want that as conditions, sir? Do you want, no? Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Okay, thank you, Mr. Havi. Anyone else has had any comments, my colleagues, before we move forward with the motion? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion on this petition, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZBA 2023-28 for variance at 117 Lilly Ave under section 5.1. For relief from the minimum lot size, minimum frontage, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot width, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, and for any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Procol.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Procol.
Approval.
Member Havi.
Denied.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, you approve, wish you the best of luck.
There is also, there's one for 117 Lilly Ave, and another vote for Anell Street. There are, aren't there two applications?
I think it's just one lot.
Just one lot? Well, we'll take the approval.
That's, yeah, that's where I was getting to the point of, there were two applications.
I think it's just one lot. Per GIS, which is the assessor data, it's, there's one lot highlighted.
Yeah, it's all listed as 117.
We just treated it as one.
So, it falls all under the petition we're doing, 117.
It falls for both.
Right, nothing's happened to Anell Street, right? Besides the, the second, nothing's happened to Lilly Ave. So, there's really nothing to.
Yep.
To vote on, yeah.
You've been approved, Counselor. Wish you the best of luck. All right, moving on to our next scheduled item on our agenda. We have ZBA-2023-32, petition is variance. The applicant is Selena and Alex Papadopoulos. Apologize.
Papadopoulos.
Papadopoulos, I'm, I'm sorry. Section 5.1, section 6.1 are the bylaws. Applies to Lowell zoning board appeal, seeking a variance approved to construct a 40-unit apartment building and associated 133 space parking area in, at the subject property. The property is located in the suburban mixed-use SMU zoning district, and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for relief from side yard setback, minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements, under section 6.1 for relief from the off-seat parking requirements, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Peck, gentleman of the zoning board of appeals. For the record, my name is John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Alex Papadopoulos and his wife Stella, the owners of 205 Pratt Avenue. Matt Hammer is with me, the engineer, this evening, and will be able to answer, hopefully, many of your questions. The, well, we are seeking to see, let me just give a little history of, of the property over there. Pratt Avenue runs off of Westford Street, near Stedman. 205 Pratt Avenue currently consists of a two-and-a-half-story apartment building, which has 30 units, 24 two-bedroom units, five one-bedroom units, and one studio. There are 60 parking spaces there now. Mr. Papadopoulos also owns across Pratt Avenue, which is 206 Pratt Avenue. Pratt Avenue is a paper street that bisects his property. On August the 8th, the city council voted to abandon that part of Pratt Avenue that runs between Mr. Papadopoulos's properties. They voted unanimously to do that, and so what that allows us to do is to, I think, make a better situation for our proposed, this proposal, this apartment building that we're proposing. We are proposing a five-story apartment building behind, I think it's shown on the plans you have, basically behind the building at 205 Pratt. This would consist of 24 two-bedroom units and 16 one-bedroom units. The interesting thing about this proposal is, we also include 26 parking spaces underneath the building. Mr. Papadopoulos also owns a multifamily home at 969 Westford Street, which is a white home, rather large piece of property, it's 8,200 square feet. As part of this plan, we will demolish that, that home, and, and use that for green space on Westford Street, as well as parking for the, the new proposal. The new proposal, well, let me get the, the variances. There are three variances we are requesting. One is a minimum lot area per dwelling unit. 3,000 square feet is required. We are proposing 1,170 parking. Based on the numbers, 140 parking spaces are required. We are proposing 133. And the side yard setback, which is a requirement of 20 feet, we are proposing seven feet. Now, that side yard is, is basically behind the new proposed building, and it runs along a butts Laureate Street, which is a paper street, another paper street, which runs behind the building. Real estate law would dictate that Mr. Papadopoulos would own half of that 40-foot-wide paper street. So, actually, the side yard setback, although technically we are looking for that variance, we really have 27 feet, the seven feet that we have, plus the 20 feet, half of the paper street. On last month, we, we met with, I, along with Nancy Judge, met with the condo association, which runs, which is across, across Pratt Avenue. Dave, Dave is here from, from that. Uh, Dave, uh, Dave is here for, from that association. We met with them on a, five o'clock on a Sunday afternoon in August. I don't know how they did that that scheduling, but, uh, anyways, uh, but we met with them, and I thought we had a very good meeting, uh, talked about some issues that they were concerned about with Pratt Avenue. Uh, one was, um, the situation of, uh, the paving of Pratt Avenue. As part of this, we will perfectly, we will repave, uh, Pratt Avenue. Uh, we'll continue to maintain Pratt Avenue. It is, uh, has been a paper street, as I said. Now, uh, Mr. Papadopoulos owns the, that part that runs between his two buildings. Uh, we will continue to maintain that, uh, to make sure that, uh, people in, in the condo, in the condo, the condominium have access to their, uh, entrance into their parking area. Uh, we will have assigned parking spaces, uh, for the new and the existing tenants, uh, which will, I think, add a lot to, uh, the, uh, more of an orderly, uh, setup over there. We'll post no parking signs, uh, along Pratt Avenue, to the left of Pratt Avenue, they are there now, but we will make sure they are more visible. Um, we don't, we feel that this, uh, proposal is, uh, is not detrimental to the public good, uh, and it does not nullify or derogate from the intent of the zoning. Very good news here, I think, a very exciting thing, is that we're going to add 40 units of housing, uh, to an area that's zoned correctly. We're not, so that, I think that's a very good thing. The master plan clearly calls for good, sustainable housing in the city. This will be new housing, good housing. And again, it's zoned correctly. The, um, DPD staff, Francesca, who we've been working very closely with, uh, for, I think, a year on this, this project, uh, already, uh, has, has sent in a memo to, uh, this board dated September the 6th, which I think is a very strong memo in favor of of this proposal. I just want to, um, draw your attention to number three. Given that this property is located in the SMU zoning district, uh, and there are multiple other multifamily structures on and adjacent to this property, staff feels that this is an appropriate location for additional multifamily housing. The gable, number four, the gable roof line of the proposed building mirrors that of the existing multifamily buildings on the property. Uh, and there's a condition on number five. We totally, we we totally agree with that condition, uh, and, uh, would clearly make it part of the, uh, part of any approvals. Uh, number six, um, the applicant, there, there's another proposed condition, number two, we totally agree and accept that condition, pertaining to, um, to, uh, windows on the side of the building facing Westford Street. It had to be a, um, a mix-up somewhere, because there are windows on, on the other side of the building facing the brook in the back. So, uh, we certainly will, will, uh, make those changes and put, uh, put those windows in on the side facing Westford Street. There's also some, uh, on the next page, there's some comments from engineering, uh, pertaining to, pertaining to the usable open space requirements. I believe that's on the, the new plan that that Matt has submitted. Um, snow storage areas are on this new plan that Matt has submitted. Uh, the parking islands, uh, that's been done. Uh, I think, I believe the new, that's the sidewalk is shown on the, the new plan that has been submitted, I think, like, today. So all the conditions that we think are very reasonable, uh, we, we, uh, we agree to, and, and most of them, I think, have already been, been put onto the plan. There is some talk, and I didn't know about this, but when I met with Nancy Judge and the Condo Association, uh, I wasn't aware that, uh, the city, I believe next year, is going to put in new lights at Westford and Stedman Street. And, um, the, uh, we have not received anything from the transportation engineer, except a, um, an email that went to Francesca and, and to us, and, um, where the, where Elizabeth Altman, who is the transportation engineer, uh, asked about the, that house on 929 Westford Street. And we got, Matt got back to him and said, "Yeah, that's going to be demolished, and, and there's a driveway there, and that driveway's going to go away." And, and I believe, uh, Ms. Altman's, um, response to that would be, if that driveway was removed, it would be, her word was "ideal." And, uh, I don't know if you can get more of a compliment than that from, from, from a transportation engineer. Benefits to the city quickly, uh, about $100,000 a year in new taxes. Uh, there'll be a more streamlined and orderly access to the property. Parking will be, you know, plentiful. Uh, as I said before, parking will be assigned, it will, it'll be assigned parking for all the new tenants and the old tenants. Uh, 969 Westford Street will be demolished, allow about 8,000 square feet of parking and green space. We're going to put some, the shade trees, it's one of the conditions that, that, uh, DPD talked about. It'll be north of, about, about a $10 million, uh, development in that area of the city. And I think for all these reasons, we, we hope that you'll look favorably upon this. I know that, um, the need for housing has been discussed much at this meeting, this board, and many other boards in the city, and, uh, we think this is a good opportunity to add 40 units of a very, very good new housing stock for this city. So, look forward to, uh, working with, uh, Francesca and the, the staff, and, and this board, uh, as always, um, but we hope you can look forward, uh, favorably on, on this request. Thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Attorney Cox. We'll open up the hearing to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the portion of appropriations closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening, sir.
My name is Dave McCabe, I live in the Westview condominium. The address is 977 Westford Street, but our front door and our parking lot open on Pratt Avenue. I have to say, my opposition to the proposal is softening. Uh, I want to thank Attorney Cox for coming to our Condo Association meeting a couple weeks ago. It was very gracious of him to do that, he gave a great presentation, we had a great conversation. Pratt Avenue is already congested, and parking is already scarce there, and if I understand this proposal, we're talking about maybe 100 cars more every day on Pratt Avenue, and that's the, that's our primary concern, is the, is the congestion on Pratt Avenue. I don't know anything about zoning, but I, and the parking's not your problem today, but, uh, there's one thing about the zoning, and that it's, it's, um, what is it? Uh, the proposal is to take a 3,000-square-foot requirement and turn it into 1,170 square feet. I don't know anything about that, uh, but I ask the board to use your judgment and expertise, that sounds like an awfully big change. That's all we have, thanks very much.
Thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, the public here in close. Um, we're going to open questions to comments to the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Havi, Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate you going through the, uh, comments and addressing one by one. Uh, we've already had issues with that, or, uh, you're a lot smarter than me, you don't need me to lead you into approval here, so, um, if we make the two conditions, um, that are stated on the engineering comments, you'd be, um, you'd be amenable to that? Okay. Um, as far as parking, um, I, I know the opposition was, it's congested over there, we actually are, uh, involved with the parking situation, so, so we do have a little bit of say, uh, with that. That area has a lot of development there. How many parking spaces for those, uh, units? Have, have you seen how many empty at this point? Are any empty? I'm just talking about, so, for overflow, right? So, uh, we need additional parking spots there? Are the lots currently around that full?
Uh, Dave, uh, thank you for the question, sir. Currently, there are, um, 60 parking spaces there. And I think, and I would agree with Dave, that, that, uh, if, if you go, if you go over there at certain times, it, it, it looks a little haphazard, I, I will say that, you know, and, and I think that's their concern. But as I said, we are adding 8,000 square feet to this development, uh, for, just basically for parking and some green space, where, where, because of, because the city has abandoned Pratt Avenue, we are able to add 18? Yeah, sure.
Good evening. I wanted to show you, um, something in terms of the existing conditions, and something that I've noticed when I've gone to the, the site. And naturally, folks want to park as close as they can to where they live. So if you go out there today, there's an existing building here, there's a large amount of parking in the back. But what folks would do is they want to park right out in front of the building, as close to the building, so that they don't have to walk that far. I think that's one of the issues, that's there today. When you go into Pratt Ave, there's cars parked on the side of the street, which is no longer going to be the case, because what we did was, we actually, um, abandoned this part of Pratt Ave. Okay? There's no parking out in front of the building. There's very little parking right here, but there's a big parking lot in the back. And what we're going to do is we're going to add 18 parking spaces right out in front of the building. So now they're going to have parking right out in front of the building, and the convenience to go into the front entrance of the building by parking in front of the building. There's also going to be no parking signs along the road as well, so that people are going to be prohibited from parking along the road. And then in this area where people tend to park, this is now going to be the entrance to the parking area here, as well as a, a new sidewalk that's going to go out to the street. So everyone's going to be able to park against the building here, which they were only partially allowed to do up until this point, and then there's going to be an entire parking lot here. And a lot of that will primarily be serviced by that existing building, and I think that's going to help with that congestion on Pratt Ave.
I think also, another, uh, very good, uh, plus on this plan is, there will be assigned parking for existing tenants and new tenants. Uh, so it won't be like, uh, grab, you know, grab wherever you want, somebody's going, you'll have your own spot, and, and obviously, we'll keep an eye on it and, and enforce it. I think that will help a lot.
Thanks. Um, so, I support this project, I think it's, uh, much needed, uh, there's already development over in that area, so we're just adding, uh, additional development to already developed area. I would be in favor of this with the two proposed conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson, Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, so as far as the parking, so, oop.
Just, uh, the trap, the parking situation sounds great. We're concerned about the traffic flow on Pratt Avenue, because of the larger number of cars. The parking situation sounds good, it's the traffic flow is, what's, we're worried about.
Then I'll amend my comment, you're right, we don't have anything to do with the traffic flow, we just have, uh, something to do with the parking.
If I may-
Yeah, Ms. Sigliano, floor is yours.
This project will also require site plan review, and at that time, impacts on traffic will be assessed by the planning board, so, um, and they have not applied for that yet. When they do, you'll be notified, just as you were for this hearing, and you can attend that hearing, and they'll be discussing circulation at that time. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Sigliano.
And I'd like to add, sorry-
Yeah, Ms. Hammer, go ahead, sir.
Uh, we'll be, uh, submitting a traffic report, uh, for the development, to show that increase in traffic and its effect on Westford Street and Pratt Ave.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. Mr. Havi, do you have any more, any more comments? Are you good? Okay. Mr. Nickerson, go ahead, sir, floor is yours.
Oh, yeah, so I was saying, so you said you were going to be able to offer 133 parking spots for the, did you say that you were going to be able to offer 133 parking spots total? Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, what's that? Required 140, but you have 133? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the benefits of this petition are, they're simply overwhelming. 40 additional units of much-needed housing stock, generating between $95 and $100,000 of additional tax revenue, creating desirable green space, uh, Commissioner McCarthy will be glad to hear that. And, uh, with the demolition of 969 Westford, we learned tonight that that'll greatly assist the city in, uh, their efforts to, uh, correct potential traffic problems with the installation of lights. This is a no-brainer for me, I'm in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will also be in favor of this, um, as long as the conditions that was referenced that will be met, and, and I, I do applaud, uh, the applicants for taking careful consideration of the Condo Association, and to ensure that at least you addressed, you know, some of their issues. Um, and as stated, the traffic is, won't be a zoning issue, because you're trying to go on Drum Hill, you would know what it's like already, but, um, but I, I think the plan itself, you know, would be such an improvement to the area, so I would be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Uh, the chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Ms. Callahan.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with my fellow board members, I think this is, uh, a project that is, uh, well-set forth, uh, it does, I understand the concerns of, uh, the, um, Butter, Condo Association, with regards to traffic flow, but as was pointed out, that'll be dealt with by the planning board. Uh, I will note, I'm looking, I'm looking at the plans, it looks like, um, there might be some traffic issues, but it seemed to be alleviated with the expansion of the street for parking, and the opening of parking in the front end of the, of the property, based on what's on the site plan, so, um, that'll be, you know, that, but that'll be up to the planning board to, to determine and decide. Um, so, uh, I would be in favor of the project, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. I think to me, this, um, this project, um, in terms of housing and units and what we need, uh, this outweighs any, um, any kind of downsides it has. Um, you know, I, I do think that the relief you're seeking is very, um, minimal in terms of the area in the neighborhood. Um, it's a, it's a highly kind of, um, built-up renovated area with a lot of, um, housing, and, and, and again, I, I do also hear the, the plight of, of the neighbor and the Butter and from the Condo Association. Again, I, I think the, uh, the petitioner is, is actually building the infrastructure to help to alleviate, um, some of the, um, traffic and parking issues as well, because they're, they're building out that whole area, um, so it, it should flow a lot better. And again, you, you have your, um, uh, you have your venues, um, to, to explore any other things you want in the next part of the process, as, as we are just, um, reviewing, um, parking and, uh, variance, and, um, dwelling area units, and, um, side yard setback requirements. So I, again, I, I think this, this project kind of, um, this is something that's really needed in the city, um, in terms of the housing need. So, um, so kudos to you, Attorney Cox. And then, you're amenable to all the conditions that, that we talked about in terms of, in the memos and everything? Okay. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues before we move forward with the motion? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion? Please, with the conditions mentioned.
Oh, okay. Which conditions are they?
Mr. Chairman, uh, sorry, Ms., excuse me. One note on the engineering, uh, whatever page that is on the memo, uh, pertaining to usable open space requirements, uh, I meant to take, bring that up earlier, uh, we were hoping that that would be covered under any other relief that this board could grant. Uh, we don't think it's a major issue, uh, the usable, uh, open space requirements, but we will, uh, address that on the chat, if, if that, if that's acceptable.
I think, um, that makes sense to me, I don't know, my colleagues have any other comments? Yeah, that-
Thank you, thank you very much.
That makes sense, Attorney Cox. All right, um, there's no further comments, we have a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding ZBA 2023 dash 32 for variance, uh, property located at 205 Pratt Ave, under section 5.1 and 6.1. 5.1 for relief from the side yard setback and minimum lot area per dwelling unit. Um, under section 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking- Under section six point one, for relief from the off-street parking requirement, pending the two conditions that's previously stated, from DPD.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hovey, can you roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member Proko.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nixon.
Approve.
All right, counsel, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. It's been a long evening. I appreciate your attention and your support, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. You as well. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda, under other business, we have minutes for approval for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any edits, comments, revisions by my colleagues for the minutes? All right, seeing none, can you have a motion to approve the minutes for August fourteenth, please?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, minutes for approval for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting minutes?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Proko, second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, unanimous. All right. Any other comments by my colleagues before we adjourn tonight?
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Proko.
I'm going to take Mr. McCarthy's seat since he's not here. I'm going to ask Fran a question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, well, thank Francesca and her staff. They've been great. We've been dealing with them a long time on this, and they've been.
Thank you for that, Attorney Cox. Ms. Sigliano and her team, they're amazing, so.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments, DPD.
I had good people like Francesca, I'd like to hear it too, so. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, you too. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah. I don't know if this was brought up before, but I'm just curious, is it possible, like, if, when an applicant resubmits paperwork, that could, is it possible for the planning department to give an updated comments? Or is that something that can be done?
Yes, in the past, so in the past, we've kind of used our discretion, like, when it's a complete rework, we would. When it's smaller, we tend to not. It's also, it is difficult right now to pay attention to those nice, like, details because of staffing capacity issues.
Of course, yeah.
So we, I would say, yeah, staff, we use our discretion, and for more minor changes, we will not issue new comments, but for a rework of plans that's larger, we would. And I'll pass that along to Dylan as well, and let him know that the board would welcome that. I'm sure that you would welcome that.
Yeah, exactly.
Who wouldn't want that? But, yeah, it is, it's challenging with the limited.
Of course.
Manpower that we have.
And that's why, yeah, that's why I was asking, not as a, I know the challenge, but.
Yeah. But I have some good news. We are, we've, we are in the process of hiring an assistant planner. We have someone, so that's really exciting for our team. And we're also hiring an intern. So maybe both of, maybe you'll be seeing, we'll definitely be seeing the assistant planner, maybe also the intern, if they have interest in staying for one of these exciting meetings. But, yeah, that's a positive update.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Proko, and thank you, Ms. Sigliano. Appreciate it. Any of my other colleagues have any comments before we adjourn?
Yep, just to confirm, Fran, so the next meeting on the twenty-fifth is going to be on Zoom only, so we won't be in chambers and.
Yes.
Okay.
Zoom only. The agenda will reflect that. It's a training, CPTC training about housing, which is obviously a very important topic. And as a board, I think you guys know that you have a really important, you're playing a really important role in creating housing and using your discretion to determine whether or not housing proposals are appropriate, basically. And so this training will focus on the fair housing laws, but also, I think, on, it'll touch on sort of like the history of housing development in the U.S., basically, which, and it's, I don't know if you're familiar with Jenny Raitt, but she is a really kind of prominent planner and leader in planning in honestly, greater Boston, New England, maybe even the whole country. Like, she's very smart and very, I'm excited to learn from her, and I think that you will all enjoy it. It's not going to be a boring seminar. It'll be interesting. I'm sure that you will all find it interesting.
Okay. It's just us for the meeting, and then the planning board has their own meeting, right?
Correct. And I did open it up to neighborhood groups, because they told me that years ago, they, this exact thing would happen and that they were invited to go, which I think is important to open up these educational opportunities for neighborhood groups as well, because they obviously have like a really prominent voice in the city too. So kind of looping them in on these conversations and information sharing, I think, is only going to be beneficial to get us all on the same page about sort of like the history of housing and the legislative framework that it operates in.
Okay. And say, we're unable to make our meeting, can we do the planning board one, too? Or is that?
Yes. Yep, and.
I'm just asking, in case. I think I should be there, but.
You can register for either.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So that means next time we see everybody here in chambers will be on the twelfth?
Let me look.
It's Thursday, right? I know it's a Thursday, because it's.
Yep, so the training is on the twenty-fifth with Dylan. I'm doing the planning board one on the second. Go ahead. You'll be on the planning board one? Yes. Okay, great. And then the last, the next in-person meeting is on October twelfth.
Okay.
And that will actually be in the Arthur Hammer Conference Room, unfortunately, because this room's booked and that room's booked. So just a heads up.
So we have to go over to our, we have to go across the way to our hand? Oh, my God, I haven't done that in a long time.
Heads up.
We had some good ones over there.
The agenda will reflect it. I will remind you over email. I think some of you have been there before, not all, but it's just, it's basically a conference room. Hopefully, oh, it is kind of a stacked agenda. There's six items, so I don't know how we're going to fit. We'll make it work.
How many do we have planned for that meeting?
What was that?
How many petitions we have planned for that meeting? If we're going to be in that, it's not a, it's not a big conference room there.
It's not a big conference room, but we don't have any other choice.
Okay.
So that, we have to make it work. We'll have people, we have other rooms in the, and we can, people can sit in another room and wait, and we can call them in.
We'll make it work, yeah. I agree.
Okay.
That's what we have to do, because the other rooms were booked. So, just a heads up.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Thank you, Ms. Sigliano. Any other comments from my colleagues before we make a motion to adjourn? Seeing none, can you have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Proko.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion, Mr. Proko, to adjourn, second by the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, folks.